I'd like to welcome you this evening to our regular board meeting. At this time, we have with us Reverend Tim Gore from Saponah Road Church of God. That was going to lead us in our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Thank you ma'am. Want to say on behalf of our ministerial association, we appreciate everyone who's supported and attended the sunrise service yesterday. It was a beautiful event. And next year, we're going to be by the lake. Ooh, yes. That is great. Heavenly Father, we are thankful unto you for your many blessings. And Lord, we know that leadership is indeed a gift and a blessing that you grant to us that can move us forward in the community. We are thankful for those who are in leadership. And we ask, Father, that you would give them the wisdom, the courage, and the guidance they need to continually take us in the direction you would have us to be. To be a community where love and compassion is expressed and shared with others. And that all people are created equally in your eyes and are all are treated fairly and equally also. And Father, we know that you will touch us and continue to keep your hand upon us and lead us and guide us to be the best possible community we can be. And we thank you for your many blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we have our additions, at least one addition to our agenda. And that is an addition of another closed session, which would be at the same location on our agenda as a closed session at the end. And this will be a closed session to consult with the attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege. So is there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? Or do I have a motion to approve our agenda that's before you?
Some of it.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, thank you. As we've started this year and with this new board, we've decided that we wanted to recognize not only the small business owners, which we do that also. We did that in our last meeting. But also to recognize the volunteer of the month. So we have, at this time, I'm going to read why this particular group was selected. And I hope there's someone here from this group to receive this. The Volunteer Key Club has been recognized by their advisor, Maria Autry, for their help in working holiday festivities for the town. Yearly clean sweeps, town pageants, volunteer work with local organizations on a weekly basis. Coordinating haunted trails, which raises money for UNICEF. Coordinating a school dance separate from home coming in prom with proceeds donated to the Boys and Girls Home. And they work with local churches for Spring Fest. And then the blanket drive, which donates blankets to the homeless. This plaque reads, "The Town of Hope Mills Volunteer of the Month Program Presented to the Southview Key Club in recognition of your service to the community on the second day of April 2018." If members of the Southview Key Club were present, if you'll please come forward to receive the special plaque. Now, our committee is made up of Commissioner Legg and Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Bullock, so if you'll join us.
Come on Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Yeah.
I would like to thank the Key Club for all their important volunteer work they do, especially in the area of the Parks and Recreation Program. They helped with the breakfasts and these for the last two weeks. They were a big help. Thank you very much.
Thank you ladies. Next, we have with us the senior Mr. Randy Hume from the city of Fayetteville. He's the transit director. And also Mr. Jay Reinstein, who is Assistant Deputy Town City Manager. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I am Randy Hume from Fayetteville and the fast transit system as well as the city. I do appreciate the opportunity to come back to you again. We haven't done a whole lot since I talked to you last time. And apologize for that, but I do really appreciate your interest in public transit and looking for opportunities the way that we can possibly partner together and to expand that. Again, I think some of this is in what we did last time, but I just, most of it is not. But, you know, I think what we want to do and as we work together is what is best for Hope Mills and what you want. And I think that is what we need to determine. I know the last time I presented some options of both a circulator within the town as well as a link between Fayetteville and Hope Mills. And what I've heard since that, and last time too, there was a lot of discussion about that need for that link. And so most of what I have tonight is going to be talking about that link and maybe some ways that we can work toward that. Just again, a reminder, I think I presented a couple internal circulators. One of them had a loop and one of them did not. Basically, it provided some service from sort of south of your downtown area along Main Street and then through here and then around by the Millstone area and that. And this was, well, I skipped the other option. The other one was the link. And I called at that time, the link between Millstone and Fayetteville, really it's Hope Mills and Fayetteville. But it linked the Cross Creek Mall to the Millstone as well as it came by Walmart and came down, partway down Main Street, turned around, and then we would go back into Fayetteville. And it would, the reason we had it going to the mall, again, this is just was a concept, was because that is the location, probably the closest location where you have the most routes that you can transfer to to go other places. But if, again, if the mall is not where we want to go, we want to go to the hospital or some other area, that is something we certainly would like to work on and again, best meeting your needs. This just shows that same map, except just focused in a little bit more on Hope Mills. One of the things that, again, this slide is similar to what I presented last time, just as sort of what the cost is of putting out bus service. And, you know, our fixed route, a fixed route bus costs somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-eight to forty-eight dollars per hour to put it out there. And that's to pay the drivers, the fuel, insurance, and all the things that go along with that. And then I just put up there as an example, you know, our, an all-day bus for us from, on about half our routes is from about six in the morning until ten at night. That all-day bus cost us about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year in operating costs. And there are some revenues that can offset that. When you have an all-day bus though, we're also required to provide ADA pair transit service. That's part of the ADA law. So if you have an all-day bus, within three-quarters of a mile of that route, you have to have the service for disabled, those that cannot use fixed route service. And that's what that's for. That service generally cost us about, and this is similar to other places that I've worked in my transit career, somewhere around thirty dollars per trip. So it's a fairly expensive service. It's not the most productive service, but it's one that's very valuable. Because a lot of times, the people that we're trying to help are people that don't have a lot of other options to be transported. So it is required if you have an all-day bus. It's not required if you have peak hour, if you have peak hour only service. And so I just wanted to point that out. Some of the offsetting revenues that could be provided, again, we have fares that you would sell. And again, you'd work on that fare structure with the town. There are some grants that are available, basically by the nature of operating the service. And our maintenance-related expenses are eligible for about eighty percent reimbursement from our grants, from our formula grants. And so that is something normally when we put out service, that's made available for that. There are some other grants that are available, but they're not always there. You know, it depends on how you put the service together as to how those are applied.
Yeah.
Then the other thing is that there are some local options. And again, I don't know that, I've been in North Carolina for seven years, but I don't know all about North Carolina and certainly don't know about towns. But I know there is a local option for a vehicle registration fee that can go to transit. It's maxed at five, at five dollars. And that's for cities. I don't know if that same applies for towns. Y'all may know that better than I do. And then I think the other one is, there's a real opportunity here because particularly on the link between the two, is a partnership. Because that's going to benefit both Fayetteville as well as Hope Mills and also Cumberland County. And I guess one of the things I do want to, I guess, encourage maybe tonight if it's possible, is to work with the county to help bring this about because of that, sort of that gap between us. I know our city limits come up pretty close together, but at the same time, there's a pretty good gap that, between where our bus turns off Hope Mills Road until you get down to y'all's town limit. Again, I did just a scenario, I kind of liked the call, it goes back to my consulting days. But basically, it's just an option to get a flavor of what bus service would cost. This one actually, instead of going to seven, I reduced it to, I mean, to ten, reduced it to seven, Monday through Friday. And then a short, a little shorter day on Saturday. The operating cost for that, for that bus would be about a hundred and twenty-seven-five. And this, again, these are rough numbers based on some modeling that we do. The net cost, that would be after some revenues are applied to that, would be around a hundred thousand dollars. Now, that is just for the fixed route part. The pair transit part, and again, I base that based sort of on our percentage of pair transit trips to our regular trips that we have in Fayetteville. And so I came up with about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-four trips probably that would be taken on that service. And again, that's a special subscription service. And at the thirty dollars, that's about a forty thousand dollar cost, again, taken off the revenues. And again, the fare revenue part of that is pretty low because, you know, we can, right now, our fare is two dollars for that. Whereas our regular cash fare is a dollar twenty-five. We're limited by the ADA law to go just to twice of what a regular fare is. So if, at our current fare structure, we could go to two-fifty. But again, it's still a pretty low part when you're looking at thirty dollars an hour cost. If you put those two together, the annual operating cost would be about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The net cost would be about a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Again, and these numbers are just to give you a flavor of what cost of a service does, would run. Again, talking about partnership funding, again, I mentioned the local option for cities. And again, I'm not sure about the town. But in Fayetteville, we have that. We have five-dollar, a five-dollar fee. It generates for us about six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. After the, you start paying it with your vehicle registration, we now, there is a fee that you pay to the DMV to collect that for you. Whereas before, we got all of it when it went just to the county. But we net out about six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars a year out of our one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand vehicles that, roughly, that we have registered in Fayetteville. In the county, county has a little more options. Again, in addition to the fee, they have other options, much more than cities do. But they can go up to seven dollars. Again, in 2014, and again, this was just some work we did back then, there were two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred vehicles registered within Cumberland County. And so just to extend that out at five dollars, that's a million-three. Again, that wouldn't be all for this, but it would provide some other things that the county could do if they chose to do that, including support of their county transportation system. You know, it's a very small system, and I know they service you all as well. But it is a very limited system. And I know that people oftentimes call us because they have pretty lengthy waits to get on that to make their trips. And so this funding could go to that as well as other things and other entities. Again, at five, I mean, five dollars a million-three, seven dollars, the whole thing is a million, million-eight. Now, partnerships, again, take time to develop, particularly where we are within our budget thing. Because, you know, we're getting close with our city budget in Fayetteville. I know the county is too. But I think it is something that we might work together to possibly approach the county with others about how we might do that to make it a real partnership. This is another option. If we didn't do all-day service, if we did express peak hour service. And again, if you do peak hour, what's called peak hour service, we're not required to do the ADA. And again, I'm just doing that to, so you know about this. And this is a case where if you ran a couple trips in the morning, you ran two trips in the afternoon, again, and then maybe a trip in midday for, so people don't get stranded all day, one place or another. That greatly reduces the cost. And the operating cost for that would be about sixty thousand dollars. The net cost would be about forty-six thousand. Again, no ADA would be required for this. Some systems for that type of service, ours will charge a premium fare. You know, you have parking rides and other things that charge more than your regular bus fare if that was an option. Also, depending on what destinations might be chosen, the more destinations you may choose, oftentimes may extend the route so that might make it cost a little bit more. So, but overall, I think it's just, again, to show you a ballpark of what this would cost. Also, last time we talked, and I have to, all I can do is apologize, because last time we talked about the Taxi Voucher Program. And Kenny, when he talked to me about coming back, said, would you say something about it? I know that y'all put some funding out for that. We haven't gotten the program going yet. We're doing it with Mid-Carolina Council Governments. It is something I think by fall, we will hopefully have ready to go. We just, we just need, we've been short-staffed and we need to give them some help to get it going. And we haven't been able, I haven't been able to do that. So I don't have anybody to blame except myself. But I do appreciate your interest and would be glad to answer any questions.
Randy, you mentioned about the grants. Since you guys covered the cost, the eighty percent of the cost grant you're talking about, is that going to the city of Fayetteville or that?
That is federal, that is, those are federal monies that come to, that come to the Fayetteville region.
Does that cost savings come back to us?
It would. Again, it's, you know, it's eighty percent of the maintenance-related cost of the service. So it pays for your mechanics and your, doesn't, fuel's considered operating cost or whatever? But mechanics and tires and parts and any repairs-type services, we have that. Eighty percent of that service is covered by federal grants.
We've already discussed a lot of this in our budget retreat. And we're moving forward with what you, I don't think everybody up here supports getting some kind of system in place. We've already had some preliminary talks. Hopefully, we'll bring that to fruition in July.
Ma'am, Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
These prices that you have in here, are they for any of these routes? The different routes that you gave us?
These were really just an example of, you know, one of them, if we ran an all-day bus from six to seven, and then the ADA service that's required to go along with it, that's the van. You see the white vans running around? That service as well, you put that together. That's the first option or scenario that I presented. The second one is if you did express only. So that means there would be a couple buses going in the morning, a couple buses going in the afternoon. And again, putting one in the middle of the day. And if you do that, you're not required to do the ADA service. But again, and that's not to devalue the ADA service, but I know it's also expensive when you're looking at budgets.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't get to, I didn't pick up on the answer on that.
Okay.
Is that price cover any of these?
It would, it would cover the, what I based it on was the Millstone to Cross Creek Mall. But really, from, if you ran that many buses, those hours of the day, that same amount of hour, the cost would be the same. So if you did, if you did a local shuttle from six to seven in the evening, it would run, it would run approximately. It would vary a little bit because, you know, one's going to have more miles on it. So the costs are going to be a little different than the, than the one in, within the town. Because you're operating at a slower speed, and so it would have less miles. So the cost would be a little bit less.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Randy, on your scenario two, what times would your two trips in the AM be?
That could be determined normally, a service like that, you might have something that goes like at seven o'clock and eight o'clock, or seven-thirty and eight-thirty, or nine. You know, they wouldn't have to be an hour apart. But usually, you'd have some pretty close in the morning for somebody that is maybe going to a job in, you know, in Fayetteville, or them coming down to Hope Mills for work. And then, again, one in the midday, somewhere probably around noon time or one o'clock. And then in the afternoon, maybe, you know, one at four or five o'clock and one at, one at six o'clock, something like that.
And all of these, Randy, would be going to the transfer point, which would be the mall?
That's what this is, that was what this is based on. Again, if you chose, if the destination wasn't the mall, let's say the destination was the hospital.
Right.
Or to Fort Bragg. You know, we would, we'd have to rework it as to how we would best do it in terms of what best meets your needs. But it, this is based, these were based on just going to and from the mall because we knew that, we looked at that and we could do that.
What if, what if we included the mall, but one of the stops prior to going to the mall was the hospital?
That could be done. That could be done. It would, it would extend the running time a little bit.
Correct.
So if you did it as an express bus, yes, you could do that. And again, maybe rather than being an hour apart, they might be an hour and fifteen minutes or an hour thirty minutes apart. Because you're going to a different place. But again, it would, that bus would be working there. And that's one of the reasons it's a little bit, try to provide some flexibility on that so you could choose to do something like that.
Yeah. Just like Mayor Protem said, I think there is a board consensus about looking at a program, a good partnership program, that would be based on the needs of the Hope Mills community.
Yes.
You know, at that start point from Millstone and going up to the mall as the transfer point. But I, I think we should also look at maybe something in between.
Okay.
And that's the reason I asked that.
Sure. And that certainly, that certainly is a good discussion to have and is certainly feasible.
Randy, thanks for all you do for the city. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next we have Charlotte Robinson with TJ Robinson Life Center.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Of course, I'm not Charlotte Robinson. But I am, my name is Andrew Early, and I'm actually here representing TJ Robinson Life Center. I'm going to pull up this presentation here. Let's take a couple minutes and let you all look at this presentation. Prior to me providing myself and...
Can you check the volume?
The speakers on? Prior to, we apologize.
There's a problem for him that kids would get blamed for things that nobody had ever taught. So the Life Center came about. You would have to know my husband. He's actually played basketball all his life. And from what I'm being told from his family, it's always been about somebody else. His life has been dedicated. Even as a kid, it was always about helping the underdog. So as an adult, being in the military, he's retired military, being in the military was always about how can I make a difference in a kid's life? He started by dealing with the local kids, working with them. And what we found out is that we bring kids into sports, that we can teach them anything we want them to know about life skills. It was always a problem for him that kids would get blamed for things that nobody had ever taught. So the Life Center came about because he wanted to make a difference on a huge scale. Our goal is to eliminate criminal records for kids making kid mistakes. It's always been very important to us that kids had somebody to look up to. And my husband, Coach Rob, has always been that person. Today, the TJ Robinson Life Center represents about six major programs. We're actually working with juvenile court system. We have juvenile diversion programs. They're important to us. We believe that education is the foundation of everything that you want to do. We have a program where we're working with the state university and Memphis college. And we're having student teachers come in to work with our kids before and after school. We also have a program where if a kid gets suspended from school, one of those student teachers could come in and match up with their kid. And what happens is mom gets to go to work, kid is out of trouble, and a student teacher gets their community hours. Everybody wins with that program. We're actually calling it the Life Changing Station. Our motto is, it's a place where kids will teach seniors how to text, and seniors will teach kids how to have respect. Respect is one of the things that we found is missing on most young kids' lives. Making their own team really takes even two to be successful.
Well, my dad has done for me and my generation, what we're prepared to do for the next generation, generation to come. What is going to happen in the Life Center?
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I wouldn't be able to share my passions with our children.
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I wouldn't have that much freedom.
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I would have a place to love on seniors.
If it wasn't for the Life Center, Fayetteville would have been a lot smaller.
If it wasn't for the Life Center...
If it wasn't for the Life Center...
If it wasn't for the Life Center...
I wouldn't be a honest student.
I wouldn't have done the hard shit.
I wouldn't be a honest student.
And if you were president...
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I wouldn't be the businesswoman that I am today.
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I wouldn't be the woman that I am today.
I wouldn't be...
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I wouldn't have the opportunity to make a difference in a child's life.
If it wasn't for the Life Center, I wouldn't have so many friends.
If it wasn't for the Life Center, where would I be?
We need your help. The Robinsons have taken this project as far as they could, even alone. Now it's up to you and me to get involved. This isn't just their dream. This is for our children. This is for our legacy. They've given their entire lives to serve us up to this mission. We should be honored to be that. The TJ Robinson Life Center, the Life Changing Station. For more information on how you can get involved, please visit us at www.tjrlifesenter.org.
Now I'm an HVAC certified, so that means like I work my air conditioners. I have all the trade in the lot, so I can work for any company, work for myself.
Now, uh, I just did one year of my masters. I'm a lieutenant military. So they provide me with education. I mean, uh, I'm a, I'm a parachute man.
Uh, I'm gonna college for business. I want my business, own business one day.
Hopefully one day I'll be able to have a company so I can give it to my son. With him telling me hard work to stay in, I'm gonna run through a few walls. But as long as you keep going with your hard work, maybe one day I can have that company and I can pass it on to him.
Coach Rob always told me I had to be your own boss. Hey, I'm here.
I'm an athlete. So I'm gonna stay in the gym and maybe over the gym, like, I'm like Coach Rob. But, uh, I just wanna be successful, honestly.
I mean, I really want to be a coach also. And I thank Coach Rob, really showed me that, showed me the right way to do it. Like, you know, he's supportive. He's always in the gym. So he definitely laid our foundation on how to be a good coach.
So I just wanted to take an opportunity to give you a chance to look at the, uh, video that kind of sums up the whole, uh, mission of the Life Center. Uh, for those that are not aware, uh, the facility's been constructed, uh, here in Hope Mills. It's fifty-seven thousand square feet. Um, I think I stood here about eight, maybe nine years ago, uh, when it was just trees out there. Um, uh, the, the project hadn't, uh, really been developed. So now we're at a point to where it has an actual building in place, if you will. Um, still have a little ways to go from a funding standpoint. And I tell you, we've talked to every municipality, um, that we could possibly appear in front of. Just looking for, uh, any assistance, any funding. And we always hear the, uh, words from everyone that we support the project. So, we're kind of at that point to where the words of we support the project are not enough. Um, so we're at a, at a funding issue now. So I'd just like to just throw some numbers out here at you. And, uh, for those that are in attendance, um, just to, just to consider, we put these numbers together, uh, back in about two thousand and ten. And I think if you incorporate, you know, the rate of inflation and things of that nature where, uh, there may be some fluctuation in, in some pricing. But, uh, we put these numbers together and, and, and what it states is that, we projected about a hundred and fifteen thousand visitors would travel through the Cumberland County area because of this particular project. Um, and that's on an annual basis. We bring in an additional hundred and fifteen thousand visitors. And how do we know that? Because, uh, the Robinsons have actually lived this, uh, from a standpoint of traveling. We've done all the research necessary. Along with those hundred and fifteen thousand that we projected to, to, to come through the area annually, we appro, we anticipated approximately fifty to seventy-five jobs would be created, uh, with this project. Hourly wages ranging anywhere from eight dollars and fifty cents an hour to fifteen dollars an hour, uh, as far as wages of rate. We projected that it would have an impact on our retail and our food industry. Uh, for an example, we, and projected an individual would spend roughly about six, six dollars a day that they were here for these tournaments. Um, now keep it in mind, uh, we would hold a tournament annually. And just with the revenue of the hundred and fifteen thousand plus visitors that we projected, you looked at the possibility of over two million dollars in a calendar year of revenue for the area. Now, Hope Mills itself probably can't accommodate that from a lot, from a lodging standpoint, uh, from a retail standpoint. But just think of the impact that it has on not just Hope Mills, but all the surrounding areas as well. Um, lastly, I put out, uh, from a number standpoint, for the, for the, for the hotels that are in the area, for an example, we anticipated that approximately thirty-one hundred rooms would be needed annually. Thirty-one hundred rooms, you're looking at about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars per calendar year that would be generated. Now, this project itself would definitely impact, uh, would definitely have an economic impact on the county, the surrounding areas. But it would also have an impact on the lives of our youth as well. Um, most recently, the TJ Robinson Life Center, we've been contacted, uh, by the Miracle, by the Miracle Network or the Miracle League, if you will. I don't know if you're familiar with the Miracle League, but they, their sole purpose is to make sure that there is, uh, adaptive playgrounds, if you will, for those individuals with special needs. Uh, and now they're looking to partner with Fort Bragg, uh, to tie that bridge, that gap between our wounded warriors, uh, as well as our kids with special needs. So the fact that we've caught the attention of the Miracle League says that we must be doing something right. However, uh, once again, funding is the issue. So, we've caught the attention of the Miracle League, we've caught the attention of Fort Bragg, we've got the attention of Fayetteville City Council, the county commissioners there. We've caught the commission, the attention of, of individuals here in Hope Mills. But words are just not enough any longer. And I'll give the remainder of my time to Pastor Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Early. I'm, I'm Pastor Fallon Proctor. I'm actually a pastor in Fayetteville with a heart for Hope Mills, with the town of Hope Mills. Good evening, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to speak with you all on this evening. I wasn't here eight years ago. I wasn't here nine years ago standing before you. Nine years ago, I was working as a federal agent, serving, having the ability to deal with the other side of the chair with children sitting before me who were getting in trouble. Parents who were receiving calls that they didn't know where their kids were when their kids were getting in trouble. Came to a point when I realized I had three sons of my own at home, that I needed to be able to invest that time in my three sons. And then turned my attention to being able to serve our community. Made a decision for my family and I to stay in Cumberland County, to be a part of the fiber of this community because I believe what the community stands for. We can throw all the numbers in the world that we want at you tonight. We can tell you about the millions of dollars we're going to bring to this community. We can tell you about the millions of dollars that we're going to bring through tourism. We can tell you all of those things. But at the end of the night, when you close your eyes and you stop thinking about money, and we really start thinking about what really matters. What really matters when you see young men in the video who had the opportunity to say what exactly the Life Center meant to them. And when you hear us say things like it's gonna be the life-changing station, we're talking about building for our future, investing in our future, talking about leaders of tomorrow. Our church had the foresight to say that we want to be on the cutting edge of this. Not because it was in Fayetteville, not because it was in Hope Mills, but we believe that this is going to be something that can impact beyond Cumberland County, something that can be a model. Why do we continue to look to Raleigh and Charlotte and other places? To be a lead for us when we have leaders in our community who can step forward? And we have the ability to create and develop something that can give others a model to be able to follow. I was reading recently in Forbes magazine, and Forbes said to me something that was so profound. It said, for an African-American male and for an African-American family, Raleigh and Charlotte was rated as to as the top cities in the nation to live. That troubled me because I could have made a decision to pick my family up and move to one of those cities for the sake of economic development and economic freedom for them. But I thought how many young people would not have the opportunity or the luxury to be able to pick up and move. And so again, I was found with that crossroad decision to stay in an area where God has called me to be able to serve, where God has called my family to be able to invest time and to invest our resources. And so we've invested the resources. We went to all of the meetings. We've talked to the councilmen. We've talked to the mayors. We've been to the state level. One of the things that I said, even at the state level, I said, I would hate to have to come to the state level to talk about something that we can get done at the town and the city level. And show them that we know how to work together in a nonprofit environment, in a profit environment, and find the funding, find the things we can do together. We've all invested seed money, not only money, but time. We tutor these kids on a weekly basis. Kids who are struggling, we tutor them weekly basis, two, three times a week as needed, absolutely no cost. They get in trouble in school, we go to visit the principals, absolutely no charge. Why? Because we believe the investment we make today is going to allow all of us the luxury of sitting back by the lake that you all invested so much money in getting that lake back up. We want to sit by that lake one day and be able to be proud of the investment of the seeds that we've sown in this township. I believe this township is the right place for the Life Center to be because this township is transforming. It is embracing the change around it, and it is fair time that we step forward collectively, not pointing fingers collectively. And we make a move together to say we're not gonna build competing interests when we already have funds that have been sown in this community to make the community better. We invite you, think about partnering. Don't think about solely we're looking for you to fund us because we are not here begging because we know the impact it's going to have on the town of Hope Mills. We know the impact. We know the numbers. But we're not just thinking about the bottom line for money. We're thinking about the investment we can make in our kids. Right now, our kids are being failed in many schools across the county. They're being failed. Someone have to say it publicly. Someone have to be courageous enough to say it. They're being failed. When we can have a kid with an A B honor roll who cannot even read to tell us how they got the grade, they're being failed. So we want the ability to be able to have the Life Center to serve as a place where we could mentor, where we can lead and help to develop future leaders who could replace all of us when all of us are gone. Somebody could courageously stand up and look back at this moment and say, this was a moment when the township of Hope Mills made a decision. And we're celebrating twenty years from now, anniversary of the Life Center. We can say, we were in this room and we stood together with all of these citizens, and this is just a few who are here tonight, who said, we want to see this come to fruition and we believe in what's going on. What are we asking you for tonight? We're not just asking you to give us money. We want a partnership. A partnership goes further than money. Partnership says you'll continue and you'll think about us. Partnership says when we're tutoring and mentoring, you won't just pass by. You'll become a part of it. And not just when it's time for an election, but you'll become a part of it when you go back to being ordinary citizens after you've served your time. Thank you so much for hearing me on this evening. Thank you for hearing us. And I yield the time for any questions that any of you may have.
This is such a large venue. Of course, I'm the financial guy up here, CPA. And I met with Ms. Robinson's, um, staff.
Okay.
Six years ago. So, um, I would not be objectionable to having a meeting with y'all with the finance, our finance committee after tax season sometime.
Okay.
Perhaps in May. And then, uh, do some due diligence, cause, um, even, even our coffers are not very big. That we're at a point where we're getting our parks and rail comprehensive studies so that we can, too, can get some grant monies as well. And, um, and perhaps, uh, some type of task force with, uh, Cumberland County who has a lot deeper pockets than we do.
Okay.
Um, to find out how to get things done. I mean, you're talking about the two ninety-five corridor out there.
Yes.
The widening of Gulfview Road.
Yes.
Uh, the tourism, uh,
Huge impact.
Commission of North Carolina.
Huge impact.
And, um, back then I talked about, uh, as I personally knew Joe Horns and, um, a couple of the professional athletes, mostly football, but they all got foundations. So, uh,
We're, we're not just doing, uh, basketball either. Uh, we're doing football and soccer as well. We have the fields that we're putting in for football and soccer. So those leagues that we're having in place, those leagues, AAU and others that are really looking to partner with us now, that's gonna give us an opportunity in the city to really, in this town to really be, uh, be that example, to be that model. So.
Uh, I'd have to check with staff and the town manager, cause we're one of the very personal matters. But we do have a finance committee that, um, if you guys have budgets and, uh, more detailed information, would, I, I wouldn't be objectionable to looking at that sometime in May.
So, Mr., we welcome that.
If that's the will of the board or whatever.
We do welcome that.
Other questions? Any other questions?
Again, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Next to have a proclamation, and this is for the Week of the Young Child, where as the partnership of children of Coman County, their partners, families, businesses, early childhood educators, employers, government, and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April sixteenth through twenty, twenty eighteen. Whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a lifetime foundation of learning for children in Hope Mills, North Carolina. And whereas the early experiences of a child determines their brain structure, thus shaping the way children learn, think, and behave throughout their life. Whereas we recognize the tremendous impact that accessible, affordable, high-quality early childhood care and education has on local employers and employees, our state, national economic security, and the viability of the American dream. Whereas early childhood teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in the town of Hope Mills deserve thanks and recognition. Whereas the town of Hope Mills public policies supporting early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures. I Jackie Warner, the mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim April sixteenth through twenty as the Week of the Young Child in Hope Mills and encourage all citizens to make critically important investments in early childhood. How appropriate for this proclamation to come at the same time. The next proclamation that I have is whereas Earth Day, April twenty-second, twenty eighteen, is a time to celebrate the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our natural resources. Whereas it is responsibility of each of us to safeguard the environment by recognizing that all human life depends upon the earth and one another for our mutual existence, well-being, and development. Whereas the town of Hope Mills is committed to balancing the economic, environmental, and social systems to create and sustain a positive quality of life for future generations. Whereas the concerned citizens of the town of Hope Mills are dedicated to the protection and preservation of our environment. And on March twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen, participated in the household hazardous waste collection, spring lake, spring litter sweep cleanup, shred event, and medicine drop. Now therefore I Jackie Warner, mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim on April twenty-second, twenty eighteen, the town will observe and celebrate Earth Day educational event. And the town of Hope Mills and inver, in urge all of our citizens, businesses, and institutions to use this time to celebrate the earth and commit to building a sustainable and green economy, and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. We do not have a public hearing tonight. However, we do have public comments. And for public comments, we have Mr. Rod McLean.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff, Public, Rod McLean, fifty-four, thirty-five, Fountain Lane. Just one comment to begin with. North Carolina Wildlife has donated us, donated to this town three, uh, signs for catch and release. Uh, Mr. Kyle, um, Kyle has put the first sign up down at the, um, gazebo, uh, down by the town dock. And I will go pick up the other two, uh, hopefully tomorrow and get them to, um, the, uh, Public Works Department. I really want to talk to you tonight. I noticed that on one of your tabs, I think it's tab seven, the, uh, Hope Mills can't really requires floodplain development permits from anyone located within the town limits. I looked into a little bit of the floodplain permits and the floodplain policies that we've got. But one thing that really gets me is, and I'll quote this directly, many, many other towns' fees start at one hundred dollars and increase based on the cost of construction. Town staff recommends fifty dollars for a floodplain development permit. I'm sorry. We have gone through Hurricane Matthew. We know the damage that could be caused by property in the flood areas. And instead of trying to put any type of substantial fee or permit for a developer to have, this isn't the same, this is the same as asking them to turn out the fluff in the bottom of their pockets. I'm sorry. If we are going to get developers to pay any attention to us, we need to smack them up the side of the head with a two by four. And if they're going to try to develop in floodplains, we do not need to make it easy for them. A fifty-dollar permit is ridiculous. It needs to be probably five thousand. And then the ordinance needs to be strengthened. We have no floodplain ordinance that is worth anything. All I would say to the, uh, board right now is look at the problems we've got with stormwater and how much money we're spending on stormwater. Let us get this floodplain ordinance completed properly and then put a permit on it that is worth something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'll read our consent agenda. And if there's anything that you'd like moved from consent to new business, we can do so. First item is consent. First item is consideration of approval of the minutes for the March eighth, twenty eighteen special joint meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes for the March nineteenth regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes for the March nineteenth closed session. Consideration of the amendment to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fee schedule to include the out-of-town boat permit fees daily and yearly, in-town resident boat permit fees daily and yearly. Consideration of the amendment to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fee schedule to include floodplain development permit fees. Consideration of approval of budget amendment number twenty-seven for the purchase of museum property in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Consideration of approval of budget amendment number twenty-eight for construction of the new dock located at the lake park in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Consideration of approval for out-of-state travel to D C A C International Education Conference in Reston, Virginia for senior program supervisor K Z Ivy in the amount of one thousand, one hundred dollars and fifty cent, and this is currently budgeted. Is there anything on our consent agenda that you would like moved to new business?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to have seven moved to new business.
Okay.
Yeah, what, ma'am?
Item E. Item E.
I'm sorry.
Item E.
Item E.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
E.
Which one?
Item E.
Item E?
Yes.
Item E. Okay, so item E will be moved to new business. And that would be, item E is consideration of the amendment to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fee schedule to include floodplain development permit fees. Removing that and putting that in new business, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without one change.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Old business update from town attorney on the four-year staggered terms for elected.
Alright, so, we've talked about this a little bit at a prior meeting, but what this would involve is essentially amending, uh, the town charter to allow for staggered four-year terms. There's two ways you can do that, really. Um, you can go to the legislature and ask for the, um, charter to be amended, um, which, as, as y'all know, is, can, can be difficult to, to get that accomplished. Or you can do an ordinance. Um, you can pass an ordinance to revise the town charter. One sixty-eight, uh, dash one oh one, the legislature provided to cities and towns the ability to amend the charter by ordinance for certain items, one of which is, uh, the length of term served by board members. So, under one sixty-eight, one oh one, you're allowed to amend the or, the, uh, town charter to do that. Uh, one sixty-eight, one oh two allows you to adopt an ordinance doing that. The process for that is, uh, the board would first, uh, do a resolution to, to amend the town charter. Uh, at the same time, you, you announce that, and you have to announce that. It doesn't have to be the exact language that you want to amend the charter, but you have to say what you're amending. In other words, that you're resolving to amend the charter by staggering the, the terms. Um, and then you would al, have to set a public meeting at that time for the, your public to, to weigh in on that. Um, once you've done that process, you can vote on amending the ordinance, amending, vote on the ordinance to amend the charter. Um, and the, that would take effect without having to go to the General Assembly. Now, if you got, you have to open it up to a petition process. So, if ten percent of registered voters sign a petition, uh, they can bring that ordinance to a public vote, which would be put on the next election, next available election. Um, and you, you could do that process independently if you wanted to put it to a vote. You could do that. Or ten percent of the voters petitioning would, would automatically send it to a public vote. Um, easiest way to do it is probably the, the ordinance, uh, path. And so, if, if it was the board's wishes to do that, what you would do is adopt a resolution to amend the town charter by staggering the terms. I, I guess actually, in order to, to make it work, since right now we have set terms, everybody's on the same term, you would actually have to amend the charter twice, probably. What you would do is amend it the first time to say, the top vote getters have four-year terms, the bottom vote getters have two-year terms. And then after that election, you would amend the charter again to change the next, next two-year term election to four-year. So that that way, you'd have the four-year staggered terms. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, so if, if, you know, we have plenty of time to, to get this done. So, what I would suggest is if, if this is the wishes of the board to do this, we, we come up with a resolution for the next meeting, say that, you know, the board is resolving to amend the town charter. At that time, you would set the public hearing and, uh, we would go from there. Are, are there any questions about that process?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. What would be the best route if we wanted to accomplish that? Would it be to do it ourself here or send it to the legislature?
I guess the legislature would be probably the, I, I don't know whether it'd be the quickest option or not. It depends on how, how, you know, amenable the legislature is to doing that. Um, i- if, if, if that's a path we want to explore, we could certainly explore that path and see if that option is available. Um, but the legislature has specifically passed a ward, uh, of statute that allows us to go to the ordinance path. Um, so I would, I would probably suggest unless we, you know, want to explore that first option of the General Assembly, we could probably just do it ourselves with an ordinance. We'll just go through that process.
Um, if I may, um, this is not a new process in state of Carolina. Three hundred and eighty municipalities have gone to the four-year staggered term and only a hundred and forty remain with a two-year. So, um, we don't know whether, how they, what, which way they went with it.
I have not done that research to know which path they took, but both paths are available.
I'll make a motion that we, um, instruct the town attorney to draft a resolution to amend our town charter in accordance with sections one sixty-eight, one oh one, and one oh two, um, for the next meeting. Would that be okay?
I'll second the motion.
Do you have a motion and second? Are there any other discussions?
Um, Mayor.
Yes.
Do the people at any point have, what, at what point do they get to say they, if they would want this or not?
So, at the next meeting, if we, if we adopt that resolution, we would at the same meeting set a public hearing. And we would advertise the public hearing in the manner in which we normally advertise public hearings, you know, on the website, in the newspaper. Um, and then the public would, could come in and, and weigh in on that. If the board adopted the ordinance after the public hearing and, uh, the, the ten percent, like I said, of the, uh, voting public or the registered voters, uh, opposed the motion, they could gather a petition and put it to a, a public vote on the next election. That would be, that would be the process that the public would weigh in.
Would that still go through the General Assemb-
I'm sorry, sir.
Would that, would that still go through the General Assembly?
No.
No. Um, that, the General Assembly by virtue of one sixty-eight, one oh one has allowed the town. It, I guess they didn't want to be bothered by that, so they allowed the town to do that on their own, um, without need for, um, an act of the General Assembly. Now, having said that, the General Assembly still has the authority to do that, and that is still the path we could pursue if we, if we want to. And we can really pursue both paths at the same time, if, you know, just to check in with General Assembly while we're going through this process. Um, the General Assembly also does retain jurisdiction. So, if they, if they for whatever reason disagree with our decision, I, I don't think that's likely, but they would still have the authority to amend our charter back because the charter is an act of the General Assembly and they, they do retain authority over that. I, I don't think that would be very likely.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, John.
The bottom line is, the citizens would have a, a say under a public hearing.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bell Flowers?
What path would the citizens have the opportunity to vote on this on the ballot?
So, the, the board could decide to put it to a vote on a ballot. That, that's one path that the board could take.
Okay.
If you wanted to have, to adopt the ordinance with the caveat that it only becomes effective upon, upon the vote.
Okay.
Or if you pass the ordinance and there's a petition by ten percent of the, um, registered voters, then it would automatically be put to a, to a vote.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, all those in favor, okay?
Do, do we know what the cost would be to put it on the ballot? Would it be about fifty thousand dollars or?
I don't know the cost.
Some approximate number there?
Um, I don't know that it would be that costly, but I, I don't know the number.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor of having a resolution to change our ordinance or to do an amendment to our charter signify by raising your right hand? All those opposed? So, it's a three-two? Okay. Alrighty. Next, we have, uh, item E under new business, consideration of amendment to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fee schedule to include floodplain developmental permit fees. And, um, who would like to speak first on this? I know we have something at our table about floodplain.
I will.
Go ahead.
So, I had the opportunity, when I was looking over the agenda, um, I was looking at the fee. And obviously, that caught my eye, the same as Mr. McLean had mentioned. Um, but I wanted to look at our actual ordinance and then compared it to seven other municipalities. Um, Buncombe, Charlotte, Chapel Hill, Cary, Durham, and Fayetteville, which all have that second paragraph of the front page that I gave you that calls for the engineering upfront, um, instead of at the back end, which I had an opportunity to speak to Dave. I'm hoping I'm not gonna butcher his last name, Steinbeck of Fayetteville. And he said, one of the things that's, that has worked for them, that it alleviates the load for their floodplain administrator, development administrator, because the front end of that engineering is done for them. So, basically, on the second page is their application, and they download their application and they hire their own engineer. They have it filled out and they bring it back to Fayetteville's floodplain administrator. And then they can proceed with the permitting with all of their engineered documentations upfront. Uh, because they do call for certain elevations, um, that we just don't have in our permit. Now, our permit was written in oh-six and was adopted in oh-seven, where theirs is in two thousand and thirteen, Fayetteville's. And the other ones have had it from two thousand and thirteen and more recently. So, ours is, and I, I did have an opportunity to speak to Ms. Brown, and she agrees there are some language things in there that probably could be strengthened in ours. So, it seems, um, it would be more necessary to update our permit or at least look at the differences, especially with Fayetteville being our sister city, that it would be the same or close to ours, um, when we both suffered such devastation after Matthew. And basically, we were an island. We couldn't even leave Hope Mills. So, those things needed, I think, to be addressed. Um, obviously, I'm one of the board members, so it's something that I thought that the board should be aware of, that our ordinance is quite different from Fayetteville's.
Discussion? What is the fee that they pay Fayetteville? Just out of curiosity, do you know?
They have different ones because they have different, also, other permits that they have to do within that. So, um, depending on the type of development is, they base it on their, the size of the development. But the actual floodplain development permit is thirty-five dollars, but they have to do other permitting in the process before doing that.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so, I just want to clarify, when we spoke earlier, um, I wasn't quite sure what it was that you were trying to get an answer on. So, I, I feel like I'm a little bit more clear now. Um, the county actually has a thirty-five-dollar permit fee as well. Um, our ordinance has two things that are different from the city of Fayetteville's. I went through both ours and theirs side by side during the first part of the meeting. So, um, the only difference in ours and theirs is that they require a elevation certificate on the front end before they actually start. So, the building code requires them to do an elevation certificate on the front end here. The permit that we are talking about is for any development in the floodplain. So, if a lakefront property owner comes to me and says, I want to put something here and it's in the floodplain, we feel like fifty dollars is fair for us to review that and say, you do not need to get an engineering certificate for that. If we start charging them for buildable space before we know what they're putting there, then it's an astronomical amount. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the fifty-dollar fee, we feel is appropriate for the front end because we are requiring them to get an elevation certificate or a no-rise. Those are all state requirements. That is listed in our ordinance and it is required by the state. And those things are costly. A subdivision to be developed in the floodplain is going to require an engineering certificate on the paper that we provide them. Now, our development permit is not yet online. It can be today, tomorrow, as soon as I give it to them to put online. But our process is no different than the city of Fayetteville's or Cumberland County. You come in, you sit down with myself and the plan review team. We give you paperwork to fill out so that we're all clear on what it is you're doing, and we charge you a fee to review that piece of paperwork. Then we give you the terrible piece of paperwork that says you now have to go secure an engineer who has to draw up plans and stamp and certify everything. So, I feel like there's a misconception on what we're, we're requiring them to come to us first and pay us to review what they think they want to do, but we're not requiring them any less than anybody else is because those are state regulations. They're not local. So, they're still required, all those same state regulations. The only difference in them and us is ours is not online.
And, a second. And wouldn't you agree that most of the problems that we're having with stormwater were prior to this type of permitting taking place?
So.
Because I think most of the issues we've dealt with have been from many years back.
Okay, so the stormwater stuff and the floodplain stuff are two totally different. Those are two totally different beasts. But yes, ma'am, I would agree that, um, stormwater regulations came about in two thousand and six. Most of our subdivisions were put in place or either permitted in the county back in sixties, seventies, eighties.
So, if they were built in a floodplain then, chances are.
Well, there was nobody here that was actually in charge of floodplain management at the time. The state was probably doing it, but sometimes when stuff comes through the county, it gets through the cracks. So, this permit, the one that we are trying to collect a fee for and the one that we, I mean, the permit's in place, we're just not getting paid to review it. So, that's what the, the fee schedule update is, or the amendment was. Um, this is an opportunity for us to look at everything on the front end and then tell them all the things that they're required to do. It gives us the opportunity to review it before they just start doing something and then we have to go and issue a stop work order.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I had, excuse me, I'm about to lose my voice. Say, I had twenty acres that's in the floodplain, either on the lake or behind a golf course or behind South Main. What's the fifty-dollar permit for? How many? Lean your feet or lots does it cover, fifty dollars?
So, unfortunately, for somebody who is developing a subdivision, they're going to have to come in on the front end and we're going to review the floodplain requirements on the front end. And then every time they go to build a home, each lot is another fifty dollars in an engineering. And it could be a certificate, elevation certificate, it could be a no-rise certification.
So, if I have four hundred feet on the lake, for every lot that I build on, I've got to come in again?
If it's in the floodplain.
If it's in the floodplain.
So, um, I'm just gonna, Mike, I'm sorry, I'm gonna use your property as an example. So, Mike's house, everything that is buildable space in Mike's yard is not in the floodplain. The only thing that he currently has in the floodplain is his dock or pier. And that also requires him to come- And that also requires him to come in. If he decides to tear that down or do anything to it, he has to come in and get a floodplain permit. Now, I may look at it and say, you're not required to get a certification to do this, or I may look at it and say, I'm sorry, you have to have that engineered. And that's gonna be something that I have to work with the building inspections department on.
May I ask, Mr. Reeves, do you have anything to put in on this? May I ask him that, ma'am?
Sure.
No, sir, I mean Beth's pretty much online there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Beth, the engineer piece is directly on the front end.
The, so.
I just wanna be clear.
When they come in, the way that we have, we have, Ray helped everybody for, to make things easier for us. He's put together like a checklist. So when, when you come in the door, Ms. Clara has a piece of paper that says, this is what you have to do. We have moved the floodplain development permit to the very beginning. So that is the first thing that I get, and then we sit down and determine what's going there, how big's it gonna be? Does it trigger an elevation certificate? Does it trigger that? Then the next thing that's gonna kick in is the zoning. So then zoning has to be looked at, what's required from a zoning standpoint. And then the very last thing that we're looking at is Ray's building. So when you go to put a building in the floodplain, or any other structure, it has to be engineered.
On the front end?
On the front end.
Okay, that was the main question. And, and I really like that both departments are working in concert with each other, because both departments know exactly what the requirements of this permit's going to be.
Well, and.
And I like that checklist.
A, a lot of the stuff that is in this permit is not something that's required by the town of Hope Mills, these are state requirements. He reports to the building code, under floodplain, I report to FEMA. So I have to do, I have to make everybody in here do what FEMA says we have to do, not what the town of Hope Mills Board wants. We can go above and beyond what FEMA requires, but we cannot go, we can't, it can't be any less. So theirs is the minimum requirement.
This is the enforcement piece that probably has been absent in past years. I, I believe that's what it is, ma'am. Thank you very much, and thank you too, Beth.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Beth?
Is, is this going to be on a, online in a way that somebody can just look it up? Because certainly, I'm pretty good at looking stuff up, and I couldn't find it, but I could go to six other municipalities and I could find it, bam, it was right there.
So the reason that it's not online is because since I have been appointed July one of last year,
Last year.
As the floodplain administrator, we have not had anything that has come in to be developed in the floodplain. We have very little developable property in the floodplain. Now that the lake is back, we have a lot of developable, developable property in the floodplain.
Correct.
So this document can go online, like I said, tomorrow, it's just not been put there. I don't, we don't even have a floodplain page on the website yet.
Well, and also, we're right in the middle of a codification process with MuniCode. And none, none of our new ordinances have been, um, nothing's been changed on MuniCode until we're done with the codification process. So this ordinance will be sent to them for review. That's what the, that's what's taking so long, is their team of attorneys are reviewing every single one of our ordinances for comments and any changes, anything that's in conflict. And they have actually scheduled, or they're asking for us to schedule a time when Town Attorney, um, Dan Hartzog and myself can have a, about a two-hour conference call with them, with their attorneys. Once we've completed that, then the process will move forward with the codification. Um, so it, it is a sort of a, a long process getting these things, um, codified. But once it's finished, everything will be updated. So, it'll, everything will be online.
What if I come in tomorrow, want a permit to build in the floodplain?
You have to get one.
Huh?
You have to get one, you just won't be charged for it.
Yeah.
You, you don't have to pay anything, you still have to get the permit, you just get it for free. But that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna tell you that you're about to have to go and have an engineer draw something up. And y'all have all seen how much engineers charge for their drawings. So I feel like this is, this is a way for the town to recoup a mi- a minimal cost of me reviewing what the engineer submits to me.
If I might, um, so pretty much the construction of all bulkhead.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Which is also regulated by the Corps.
That is regulated, I believe, by, I think the building code actually is what regulates bulkheads. But, um, it regulates commercial, I think, very well, and there's a very vague, um, residential code. So we have already spoken about it, and I, I, you know, that's something that we don't have an engineer on staff, so we have to.
Generally, wall height determines whether you need an engineer, correct, four feet or higher, or something like that?
You'll have to ask Ray that question.
You know the answer, Ray. Uh, before you have to get an engineer, if you have a retaining wall, is it four feet and less, you don't need an engineer? Or three feet and less?
When you need a retaining wall, you go into the code to measure a four foot, that starts at the bottom of the footing, not the wall itself.
Yes, sir.
Nobody's gonna come up with a four-foot wall without a one-foot footing, I'm five feet, that requires an engineer, it starts at the bottom of the footing.
A total, a maximum of four feet, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and that's per the building code. So for floodplain, if you're putting that within the floodplain, then you are gonna be required to get a no-rise certification, which has to come from an engineer. And he's basically stamping a paper that says that what you are putting in the floodplain is not going to cause a rise in the elevation of the water. So you have, you'll have separate, there are separate requirements. That's why the permit is very lengthy, and it's not very costly, but it requires you to give us a lot of information on the front end so that we can accurately determine what is required per the building code, per the state floodplain regs, and anything else that may come into play. It's kind of a checklist for, for staff is really what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Hartzog, would it be advisable for us to have a moratorium until after this is, is drawn up and settled on building in the floodplain?
Well, I, I don't know that you could do that, really, because whatever ordinance is in place at the time is what we control. We, we do have ordinances on that that reference the building code, that, you know, the pier ordinance we just adopted talks about bulkheads and the, uh, the building code that apply. So I, I think we already have a lot of that in place. Uh, I, I think the only thing is the initial fee, which is relatively minor. I wonder if that answers that question?
Well, it does in a sense, yes, because once they get the free permit, they get surprised with the, that we do have that ordinance now for the engineer drawing.
Yes.
We, we do have that ordinance in place, yes, sir. That's been in place since two thousand six. And I actually had, um, a representative from the state floodplain office come down, and she sat down with me, went through our entire ordinance. Um, she did note the fact, um, what Commissioner Larson brought up, that some municipalities actually request in the floodplain ordinance, two copies of the elevation certificate, one at the beginning and then another at the end. So what ours says is that for floodplain, you have to provide it to us at the end. Unfortunately, for building code, that has to be provided on the front end. So we can certainly add it to the floodplain ordinance, but it, and maybe Mr. Hartzog can answer that. It, it seems to me to be redundant if we're already requiring it. Because if you're coming to me for a floodplain development permit, you're gonna have to get a building, um, permit from, um, inspections department, and they're gonna require it on the front end.
And that's on your checklist?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, sorry, ma'am.
Okay, alright, at this time, um, since we pulled it from the consent agenda, do we have a motion to, uh, approve?
Somebody.
Second. Okay, have a motion, a second, to approve item E from the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alrighty, next thing, we have our manager's update.
Thank you, Ms. Brown and Mr. Reeves. Okay, um, Mr. Fleming, Fleming and Associates will be able to attend the April sixteenth Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Um, so, uh, and Public Works Director, um, Hector Cruz and myself are probably going to have a, um, conference call with him later this week to kind of go over what it is that you all are, you know, possible questions and concerns that you all may have. And then he would like to go to the lake and visit the site one more time prior to that meeting, so. Um, I've got some updates on the street paving project. The contractor is working this week on raising the remaining utilities, full-depth patching and resurfacing of some areas. Update on the Johnson Street sidewalk, McGill Associates is working on the storm drainage alignment now, which could impact the waterline location. The engineers expect the plans for both the sidewalk and the waterlines to be ready for, for the town and for PW, PWC to review very soon. Rockfish Road sidewalk, it was decided to extend the, um, the, uh, opening of the bids till next week to allow for a few more contractors to be able to bid. So the sealed bids for the project, uh, will be received until two PM on Tuesday, April the tenth, here at the town hall. Um, and all bids that have been duly received by that date and time will be publicly opened and read aloud. Update on the damaged areas from Hurricane Matthew. Work completed to date on East Patterson Street. The bank clearing along the street is complete. A hundred percent of the rock has been installed on the bank. And, um, we are waiting on the seeding and matting of upper portion of the embankment. Um, and I've looked at it, and it looks beautiful, really good job on that. Uh, Davis Street asphalt was removed and all unsuitable soil removed. Street portion bit, has been prepared for repairs per the design. Tree and mailbox removed from opposite side, uh, inside the right-of-way, mailbox placed on the other side of the driveway entrance. Thoroughbred Drive, no date has been set for that work yet. And River Road, they are still waiting on the delivery of precast concrete headwalls for the new culvert. The Hope Mills Congestion Management Plan Meeting was, public meeting took place on March twenty-sixth at six PM at the Parks and Rec Center. I understand that there was a great turnout with a lot of participation from the public. Um, do not have any, any date or timeline on any future meetings yet, it's a little bit too soon for that. Uh, eel migratory season, uh, has officially started. And per the four- oh, four-oh-one, four-oh-four permit, um, the basket has been inspected as of today with no eels to be found inside. Items for correction at the dam, an inspection was conducted with Mark Landis of Schnabel Engineering on March twenty-second. Items that were inspected were the left and right embankments, low areas on the top of the dam embankments, as well as low areas on the downstream side of the embankments near the wall drains, downstream area of the spillway, including all drains, and an official report will follow. Hope Mills Lake Maintenance and Operations Policy, we have, um, drafted a, a policy, and it's been reviewed by town staff. It has been sent to the town attorney for legal review, and training for staff is scheduled for this week. Uh, Park and, Parks, Park and Lake Rules signage, Director of Public Works Hector Cruz has designed a beautiful, beautiful signage, and, um, hopefully, we ready this week for pickup. Uh, the clock off of Main Street, we have made contact with the First Citizens Bank, the town does not own that clock. First Citizens Bank owns that clock, um, regarding the repair and correction of the time. The manager has reported that a part has been ordered, and, uh, they are waiting on the part to be delivered so that they can fix the clock. And we'll stay on top of that as well.
So the clock sits on the town property? Is that the town property there, right?
It is, but it, but the town has no, no maintenance, no part in ownership of that clock, it is owned by the, by the bank.
That's good and that's bad.
The, and apparently, they've had the part ordered for quite some time, so, um, I, maybe it's just an issue of now that we've kind of alerted them that, you know, we, we're, we want it fixed, maybe they'll follow up with, with it as well, so. Um, the town's planning department has activated a Facebook page, Hope Mills Development and Planning. And the town's administration department has activated a Facebook page for the administration department. And it is called Town of Hope Mills Administration. So please like our new pages. Um, and half the room is left, but hopefully, um, you know, some of our active Facebook people can share that. Um, my graduation from municipal and county administration course is scheduled for Friday, April the twenty-seventh, with a luncheon following the graduation ceremony. I am allowed to invite my family members and the mayor and the Board of Commissioners. So anyone that is, um, interested in coming, just get with me and I'll get you the pertinent details.
Will you keep us posted on that?
I will, I sure will, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I also received, um, a letter from Charter, um, Charter Communications that I'd like to share just a little brief, um, synopsis of this, um, it, it serves, um, providing services locally as Spectrum. Um, and they just wanted to let the town know that, um, they are America's fastest-growing TV, internet, and voice company. Um, they are, um, they have just recently announced that they are increasing their investment in their workforce by ensuring that all employees are paid a minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour. They also wanted to communicate that Spectrum is proud to employ more than twelve thousand veterans. They look for talented individuals with, with military backgrounds and offer broadband technician apprenticeships, um, program where they can progress through the technical career progression plan. All of our employees enjoy flexible benefit options, including health insurance, 401K, tuition and reimbursement, and many other benefits. So they asked that I share this with our constituents and the board. I also received, um, and even, um, our Parks and Rec Director Kenny Bullock, this is going to be a surprise, because I didn't mention this to him today, but I just received, um, a very nice letter today from a gentleman by the name of Ernest C. Carter Junior. And it is addressed to me in regards to Ms. Casey Ivy, Senior Programs Supervisor, and Ms. Ma- Anne Ivanka, um, the Assistant Supervisor. And what he would like to say is, I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the outstanding job you do with the ser- with the Senior Program of Hope Mills. I often discuss our program with others from different counties, and I know our programs are second to none. Due to the professional way you perform, you make special events seem like just another day at the office. Thank you again for a job well done. And I'll make sure that this is placed in both of their personnel files. And that concludes my update. Thank you very much.
Congratulations to Parks and Rec and Ms. Abby.
Thank you.
It's always nice to be able to share a positive affirmation from the public.
For a change.
We get enough complaints, but those are the, those are the most enjoyable.
They are.
Okay. We're now down to committee liaison updates. And I, um, want to first, because I think it's important that we've got two commissioners that actually sit on the committee, but I would like to. but I would like to announce that our lake celebration is going to be June thirtieth through July fourth. And just a brief synopsis, because we're still in the planning stage, but on June, uh, thirtieth, we will have the first Hope Mills Boat Race, and it's made out of cardboard boats. And we've got, uh, all the information. There'll be flyers out, um, and it's, there, there actually has been a national cardboard row, uh, boat race champion, and the gentleman that is helping organize this, that's what he's done. And there, hi- his, his, um, the, what you have to do and everything about it, the idea is, the awards and trophies are given not only for, um, Team Spirit Award, the Pride of the Fleet, in other words, the best looking boat, but then there's also one, the Titanic Award, that's given to the boat with the most spectacular sinking. Um, but there's, uh, more information will be coming out, and it's a fun time race, but it'll be done. You have to wear, um, of course, life jackets, and you would, can be a one or two man boat, and they'll be going, um, in the swimming area. And they will have heats, in other words, maybe two or three boats would race, and then there'd be a winner. But naturally, the, the goal at the end of the day is to have a big dumpster from Waste Management, so that all the cardboard will be collected and, uh, but the, the, it's just a fun event. And they used to do this at White Lake. They do have one coming up, April the twenty-eighth, at Holden's Beach, if you were interested. Um, we also, and like I said, that information will be at our next board meeting, because we're gonna try to get the flyers and stuff out. And Mr. Brent Spivey is the Chair of that committee. Um, Saturday's events are not yet cut in stone. We're waiting to get some more information, but there'll actually be either a gale or street dance on, on Saturday. I mean, I'm not Sa- yeah, Saturday evening, which the race is in the morning. That will be in the evening. We also have Chris Hall with Heroes on the Water on Sunday. He's gonna have, this is the group that works with veterans, and they're gonna do kayaks and canoe event on the, on the water. Uh, this will be done after church, probably around one o'clock, but those details are not here yet, but there's more to come. Uh, that evening, it'll be called Church at the Lake, and we've got some participation from all the churches as far as choirs and, and that kind of music. But that, the goal for that evening is to make it something special so that, uh, things will happen in gazebo. Uh, on the July second, we got jazz on the lake, and we're gonna have a jazz band, hopefully have some, uh, high school participants also, but the goal is to have, uh, work it out so that we can have some food trucks down there with different kind of food. Also encourage Big T and Robbins and any other restaurant, but the goal there is to have, um, that type of music and make sure that everybody gets all the information about it. We'll also have, um, on July third, it's gonna be beach music and also a street dance, zumb- zumba cla- uh, class that we're gonna have, uh, for everybody that likes to do that and shagging on, uh, Trade Street. Uh, that's on the, that's on July third. July fourth, we'll be back to doing what we always do, and that's gonna be, we'll have our parade. Uh, we'll have events up at Pier. We'll have events down at the lake. We'll have, uh, vendors bands. We'll have fireworks. And then one other item that was added tonight is we're gonna have a Miss July Fourth Contest and do it very similar to what we ran in Miss Cotton, but this is a separate title. And we'll have both queens, one that represents us year round and one that represents us for the July. And then one last thing that we added tonight is a patriotic pier decorating contest. We believe that we needed to get, we're gonna decorate the, the public side. We want the, the piers to decorate. Mayor pro tem. And what they'll be doing is they'll have their, where the goal is to, we'll get the instructions out. They'll decorate their piers. Um, and on June thirtieth, those piers will be judged, and we're gonna ask, because there's been so many questions about the boat that we own, we're gonna ask Chief Hodges with a, whoever he would like to join in to be our judge. Also, we need to have some safety, uh, down around our boat races, and so we're gonna ask if our fire department will provide that with their water rescue. And I didn't, I was gonna hit you with that after the meeting, but I thought you're here. You might as well know. We're gonna include you too. And of course, we're also looking at some partnerships with, um, Dick's Sporting Goods, Field and Stream. So we're gonna have it water events that are family oriented. We're also looking at a fishing event for children, kayak races, but it's coming along very well, and the committee is super to work with. So just know that there's some wonderful things happening. There'll be a teaser out, and it's the First Annual Hope Mills Lake Celebration, and it's, the dates, save the date, event, June thirtieth through July fourth. Now, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell, historic preservation.
We didn't, we didn't have a meeting this past month. We're meeting every other month, Lisa, right?
Okay.
We do have a meeting come up on April eleventh.
Alrighty, so April eleventh is next. So Commissioner Edwards?
Okay, we had a meeting Tuesday, March twentieth, and they discussed, um, the daily fees and all that they're gonna have over there for the, well, the kayaks and the, the canoes, there's no fee for. But the, what they were discussing was, um, the permits and the residents was gonna have five dollars. This is on daily fees, and the non-resident would be ten dollars. Annual fees would be residents fifty dollars and non-residents a hundred dollars. Um, it was brought to our attention also that there were so many geese and, and, um, I call them snowbirds, but they're, they're, they're not.
Seagulls.
They'll leave and go on to the beaches summer, but, uh, the seagulls. Um, and Mr. McLean had been checking on different areas on how to get rid of them. And Mr. McLean, I did find one place, and it's called the Goosebuster. And they're, they're located in Charlotte, and they also have the, uh, collies that you were talking about. So that's something I'm looking into too, because they do travel around, and they've had a lot of, um, success with it. So I, I'm gonna bring that up to you. Okay, and I was also told that on, if you have kayaks or canoes and there's no permits, um, that you have to put in for, but if you put them on there and you decide to add a little motor or, um, anything to it to make it go fast and all, you do have to have a permit for those. So if you modify your kayak or your canoe, you have to get a permit. And, um, Mr. Bullock's interviewing, um, the lake attendants now, and he said they'll be in between five and ten. And they do have their two-year, um, catch and release, that was discussed. And the ordinance, I guess they, they've already brought that to you, and you've been looking at it, so. And I guess that was it. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, Mayor, um, Mayor, you asked us to look at, at the geese problem, and you recommended having a feeding area. Town ordinance says there will be no feeding of wild animals.
But we're, we actually are feeding them, and a rapid amount of bread is being taken down here every day.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening is, I'm sure we're gonna, I don't wanna obligate our police or, or the lake attendant to try to run off, you know, little toddlers that are feeding them, but I think we're, that's what, that was my point, was that we've got so many people feeding them. I know we have an ordinance not to feed them, so I guess we have to enforce it.
And you, you have some major problems with feeding of geese, uh, especially the way that people are feeding them right now with bread and hot dogs and God knows what else, to be perfectly honest with you. That is causing the geese and the ducks to become sickly. Your average goose eats three pounds of vegetation a day and deposits one pound of it back on the ground for you. If you check the water at the, at the, um, swimming area right now, you'll probably find it extremely high in E. coli. You will find it high in E. coli across the, all the grass level. The only way, um, and there are different places and different ideas of getting rid of geese. However, it comes down to, the first and the main one is do not attract them. Get rid of, you know, to get rid of them, you have to stop attracting them. We have to enforce our town ordinance, do not feed the geese. It will not be long with the number of people that I've seen down there like today, that some child is going to be happily walking along with what's left of a Big Mac in his little tiny hand, and it's going to get attacked by a goose. They are going to attack the children, and that's gonna come back on us as the town. So we've got to put it, a stop to it, and we have to put a stop to it now. One of the best things that, um, will help us get rid of it will be putting in a bulkhead. That will stop the geese getting up onto the ground as easily as they can right now. But that bulkhead, which will also help our erosion, will help stop the geese. The other answers we've got, like letting the grass grow, you probably don't want to hear about.
I will tell you that, uh, after that was recorded in the newspaper, I had someone call me and said that if we could, if there was a local falconer, that if you could get someone that had a trained falcon and bring them and let it just circle, that geese do will move away. And they said that it has happened, that the geese would be gone at least two years until a new population would come back, but that a falcon is one way to get rid of them. Of course, I don't know anybody that has a falcon, and I'm not sure I would want to be down there when there was a falcon there, but, uh, there's been all sorts of suggestions of, but I, I agree, we need to enforce the ordinance.
And falconer will cost you more than a trained dog handler man. Uh, my mother was a falconer, and I know what goes into it, and to be able to do that, uh, will be extremely expensive.
Okay. Alrighty.
We do have three very large red-tailed hawks.
The problem is that they are to acclimate to that area, and we are going to have to physically persuade them to leave.
Okay. Alright, Commissioner Legg, Appearance Committee?
Mayor, I did not attend the Appearance Committee meeting because we had a special meeting here the same night, same time. Although I'm a big guy, I can't split myself in half. I'm sorry. I have nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec and Lars, Commissioner Larson? We had two hundred and one breakfast with the bunny and seven hundred and eighty-nine that participated in the egg hunt. Um, we went over the celebration, which you've already covered. Um, our next, uh, event will be the spring litter sweep on Saturday, April twenty-first, from nine to twelve, which also is the same day that the household hazardous is being done between eight and two. And then the next one, I'll be able to announce at the next meeting, so. Um, I do have a meeting with the stakeholders on April twelfth, but I'll be at the zoning.
Okay.
At four thirty on April twelfth. It's for the quality error thing downtown.
Do you all have qualms, Tom?
I don't know how, we did, yes. We had, uh, yeah, we did. We did not vote on the officers because there were several that were missing, and they decided to wait until there was a better turnout for that one.
Alright, Commissioner Bellflowers, veterans and Rulak?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Veterans Affairs Commission met on March twenty-second. They introduced, uh, several new members, uh, to the committee. Uh, they elected, uh, their new board for the, uh, coming term. Uh, they talked about adding nameplates, uh, to our, for Memorial Day, um, and there's three of them, uh, that they wanna add for Memorial Day on the, uh, on the plaque. They talked about Veterans Day Parade, which the new application is online. Uh, and they also talked about Veterans Affairs Commission meeting at Cumberland County. And that's the report on Veterans Committee. Rulak will not meet again until May, and that's the report, Mayor.
I want to, especially, I know that, uh, only one member's here right now, but our, we participate, of course, in Hero's Homecoming, and the first meeting of Hero's Homecoming was last week, and I would like to commend our, uh, Veterans Commission because, uh, just about the whole commission attended that meeting. And so Hope Mills was very well represented, and it was, it was nice to be there and have, uh, so much participation because, again, we're looking forward to the, it's November ninth through eleventh. It's gonna be the partic- it's gonna be Hero's Homecoming event, so just so you know that our veterans were there and well represented.
And, Madam Mayor, I think, uh, the next meeting is scheduled for April, do you know? Is it twentieth? Okay, thank you. April twentieth.
And it's going to be at the, um, library again, Downtown Library.
Okay.
Eleven thirty.
And I believe it, um, it's Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Bellflowers, myself, and you as well, but, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next, we have staff comments. Tiffany, we appreciate you helping out and doing all the work you're doing for us. Thank you.
Tiffany's been doing an excellent job, so.
Yes, good, thank you.
Give her props for, she's stepped right in pretty seamlessly.
Good.
I have nothing else.
Do you have anything else? No? Any official comments?
I'd just like to say, thank you. Congratulations to Parks and Recreation for their very successful Breakfast with the Bunny and participating in the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Town Manager Adams, um, how's our Citizens Academy registration coming along?
Uh, we're, we're, we've got a, a full, I think we're right on.
Fifteen or sixteen, for tomorrow night?
We've got, we've got ten, so, yeah. And hopefully, we're hoping a couple more people may bring applications tomorrow, but we really don't want too many more than ten because it's kind of, um, I've heard from some of the department heads, the more that you get, you know, it becomes a little, um, clustered, so, yeah. I think we're at a good number at ten. If we get two or three more, we'll be fine, but we're going with ten. So it starts tomorrow night.
Great. And I know I wasn't on the board, but, um, I personally don't see the need to see the town attorney's bill every month on here, as long as he's wa- operating in the budget that we already approved. I mean, I could see it if he had a supplemental bill. I mean, that's just my thoughts on it.
Previous board action, that it be placed on the agenda, so.
So that has to be rescinded by a previous board member that was on the prevailing side, whatever, so.
Oh, no, there was no official action.
Yeah, I mean, I think a consensus from you all that it be removed would be fine.
Are you all okay with that?
Yes.
If I was a previous board member, I'd be willing to rescind that.
Okay. Okay. I think just consensus, we got, it's kinda like we took the, the dam update off, so we'll just take that off too.
I'll remove it. Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do, Attorney Harrison.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just wanna thank, uh, all the citizens for taking some time out, come out and joining us tonight, another productive meeting, and for the presentations. Uh, they were excellent presentations tonight. Um, and, uh, I'd just really like to, uh, give it a lot of good thought about this transit, uh, proposal that's, uh, that was presented tonight as well. Could help a lot of citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Got a motion to, um, conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A four to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body, and, um, to conduct, um, session, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A six to discuss personal matters, and also to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A three to consult with the attorney on matters within the attorney-client privilege.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we will return as quick as possible. We're going to the front conference room.